I am H O one on one jams number one for classics in today's hip hop and R and B home of Cheryl Underworld radio, the rise and grind morning show. But this is in my humble opinion, Maxilia, Charles razor, and we have Aaron Simmons. And to close out this this hour, to close out the show, we have none other than Charlottesville's own independent running for city council. She was born and raised in Charlottesville, been a youth counselor assistant, project, community organizer, youth counselor, substance abuse clinician, and the list goes on, on and on. We're talking about Miss Nakia Walker. Nakia, thanks for joining us.
Thanks for having me.
Absolutely. And we appreciate you taking the time to to talk to our listening audience. November 7th is right around that corner.
Oh, goodness, ten days, ten days.
That's right. That's right. And so we so we want, you know, we wanted to use today's show as a platform to make sure that our listeners who maybe couldn't get out, you know, to the, you know, like to the parties, to the to the town halls, the forums, all that good stuff, to make sure that if they listen to the radio, they would have that opportunity, maybe their their last shot before November 7th. So why the independent candidate Nakia Walker, you know, sort of introduce yourself and and why you? Why you on November 7?
I mean, you you vote, I've been telling people the entire campaign process, you know, just vote for someone who's aligned aligned with your vision, you know, that will that will work for you. And we have a lot of people who, you know, want jobs, want to be in positions, but, you know, who who they cater to and who they work work for. And it's been clear, everything from my campaign slogan, campaign colors, the entire process of running for council, that who who I have been supportive of working towards, you know, helping fix some of the disparities, where where my where my where my passion lies. And I just, you know, I've been doing this, you know, doing the, you know, the in the trenches, doing the work, the name, the list of occupations, you named that list, you're you're in the trenches doing doing that work. And I, you know, and I know more importantly than anything, I know how to honor people. And I know that people, their voices mattered. And so what I want to do is bring the people who voices are not in the room and not me being a voice for them, but to make sure that they understand that none of this is going to be fixed without without them in the room.
And now in saying all that, do you and I say this with all due respect, because I know how educated, how well informed, and how qualified you are. But do you feel somewhat like a Cinderella story coming in, really opposing the current establishment, but still getting this level of success? Because I'll be honest with you, like when I looked around town, and I see the number of our white citizens, you know, with their sign in the yard, and you know, and when I look at, you know, I'm like, how you really are, you know, coming in shaking things up, like, is any of this a surprise to you, or this is going according to plan?
Um, I think the part, you know, so I was ready for the fight, if that makes any sense, you know, I could have had some very nice generic campaign slogan. My campaign slogan is unmasking the illusion. There are two cities in this one, right? And a lot of people are not thriving. And the Charlottesville that people talk about, discuss, that end up in magazines, the, you know, best places to live, way before the events of the summer, you know, when people were comfortable. I tell people all the time, when you're talking about oppression, white supremacy, white privilege, and what your skin tone being white brings, no one had to give me permission. I was talking about that in March when I announced. That was before anything happened this summer. So I was ready, you know, to spend this time during this campaign process, you know, making sure that I honored where I've come from, and honored, you know, the people that, you know, that that's primary for me. But at the same time, you know, just just being true, not, I mean, integrity is still intact, right? And again, I do have a lot of skills, but a lot of people have a lot of skills, you know, so a lot of people can tell, you know, a different story if they're just given, you know, the opportunity to tell that different story. And so I think that I don't think I'm a Cinderella story. But but I definitely, I I I understand what you're saying. The events of the summer also helped a lot of people start paying attention that wasn't necessarily on board. So there are a lot of people who were just gonna run down that Democratic ticket and check, check, check. And then now they're saying, hold on, let let us look. But even before may happen, where the alt-right started coming into, you know, into our space, I have been clear, right? I have been clear about who I am, where I've been, and the direction that I think we as a city, you know, we need to take. And I've been clear about, you know, like a Richard Spencer type with all his wealth and the privilege of being white, he's not an outsider from this community. So I have not been willing to jump on board with that story being told. There are Richard Spencers at almost all the leadership tables that I've sat in. And that's part of the story that we need to, you know, talk about other people who influences all of these disparities that that we're talking about, because we're usually talking about numbers. But because I'm from this area, and I know the faces, I know the names, I know the people. So I'm not talking about numbers, I'm talking about humans. I'm talking about, you know, family and friends, and friends of family and friends. And so it's just a different, you know, level of commitment. And when in, I didn't set out like I must have this. When I decided to, you know, contemplated whether I would run and decided to go through it, it was like you will tell, you know, the story that you know to be true. And you will be true to that process.
Right, right. So so then Nakia, how about we like sort of dig into it for for people who say, wow, you know, I really like Nakia, I like how she's standing up for, you know, the the people of Charlottesville, who maybe have been overlooked for for
Not maybe.
Yeah, I'm sorry, the people who have been overlooked for far too long. So but then they want to say, but Nakia, you got it. Sometimes in politics, you got to make more friends than enemies. So how are you going to get this done? So when you look at living wage and job creation, for for instance, like what's your what's your what's your platform there?
So and I'll answer, you know, both of those questions. So you do have to get something done, but don't come to me with crumbs expecting me to jump on board with that. So that's just, that's been the difference. What I think people talk about compromise and settling when they're talking about lives that don't affect those, you know, theirs. I'm not going to accept anything less for the families in the Charlottesville community that I wouldn't accept for my own family. So that's one of the things that has been different. I just left a meet and greet where I was asked at, like, how are you going to work with other, you know, other people? And what I basically said to them is that the Charlottesville community is going to have to decide how we want to move forward as a community. There is a lot of dysfunction, and I, you know, equated that to fire. I'm not foolish. I'm not stepping into the fire with them. So even with being willing to, you know, go on council, what I'm saying is that I'll, you know, attempt to help fix this with a we, like the community going coming on board with changing faces. But I'm not saying that I'm stepping into the dysfunction with the current, how current leadership operates, because that's not how I operate. So the compromise can't be about me becoming dysfunctional with them. You have to want something different. You asked about a living wage. I've been working on a living wage campaign within the city for the past, you know, less than, you know, two years. And the city's entry pay was $10.95 an hour, and it is now $13.79 per hour. I did not go into the rooms expecting people who make $200,000 a year, $90,000 a year. Who knows with some of the other, you know, city council members in their, you know, outside work, what they earn, if they understood why that was important. I set it as a priority. And then I went to the budget meetings, I talked to, you know, individual counselors, and I kept telling, you know, the stories of people who were affected by, you know, the low wage. So again, I wasn't looking for permission to start that campaign. It was something that, you know, needed to be done. And I kept working at it until we have now, you know, in that short timeframe, and as a city employee, you know, pushing, you know, to make sure that people who came in at the entry level were they were paid well. So I think there's a difference, you know, when Dorothy Heights passed away, she said that something that was wrong with the generations that came after them in the civil rights movement was the whole asking for permission. And so I make sure that, I mean, I definitely honor, but if there are certain situations, then if you walk in the rooms in Charlottesville, you can see this where there isn't, you just have to, again, set the priority and and move from there.
Hello, Ms. Walker.
Yes.
Got a question for you this race. I want to be fair, just like we did with everybody else. So I'm gonna list a couple of things, and then I'm gonna get out your way.
All right.
All right. Stop and frisk, all right? And what do you plan on doing as an increase in the businesses for the minority, people that try to start businesses that seem so hard to do in the city of Charlottesville? And last question, when it comes to like section eight affordable housing, you know, I know that you stand strongly on that. But as they do these renovations, and they rebuild them, they seem to outprice the people that were originally living there. Where are you going to take your stance at?
So you have to remind me of all the questions, but I'll start with the last one. So the affordable housing piece, I've been, you know, one of the key voices in redevelopment plans for Friendship Court for the past three years now, basically telling them that you can't come into somebody's space. Those that land is already occupied with families who live in in those homes. And the way PHA currently has their master plan set up, and I will interject here and say there is possibly the new director, he sounds very hopeful, but he's just coming in, and he's coming into a community that may want something different.
New director of public housing?
No, P. My Housing Alliance, and that's who runs Friendship Court. But right now, they have the setup where there, you know, we won't displace the 150 families, you know, that that live there, 48 to 50 affordable housing. And that's the affordable housing that people are comfortable with. Where were our doctors, teachers, you know, not doctors, teachers, police officers, firefighters, doctors are not in that affordable housing. That was, you know, era. So make sure people understand that. But and then 350 to 400 units of market rate. You don't come into somebody else's space. And then, again, the way that currently is set up, it would displace people, even if they were able to offer their master plan, you know, not displace the 150 there. It does nothing to fix the crisis that we are currently in. And then you're talking about bringing in the 350 to 400 market rate units, efficiency to one bedroom. So you're basically bringing single income, single people with a lot of income into neighborhoods where there are families and a lot of children. We already, and this goes to the stop and first question, we already have major issues in, you know, how black people and people at the lower economic chain are police, how social services interact with their families, whether they're even able to raise their own kids. And then, you know, that's right there is a setup for both of those agencies to receive more calls when people feel like parents are not parenting the way they think they should. And with the major social issues that we already have in this town, that's again, it may not have displaced them initially, but that's something right there that could displace them, you know, at some point during the process and break down, you know, the family unit. And until we address some of the major issues we have, like, why are the majority of people who are stopped and frisked African American males, who ends up in our jails, state and federal prisons, you know, that's still happening. And it's been happening. And I've said, we are still fighting a 1980s war, war on drugs. Why? Why are we doing that? I was at a meeting Friday, Friday night, and a former judge said, you know, people were getting, you know, more time because, you know, they got a higher high with crack cocaine and pot. Wait a minute. So you are sentencing people and in charge for a long time based on how high they? No, 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 no. And so again, chemistry class, he missed, you know, a few things. But, you know, that conversation didn't because we know as a community that because of, you know, Iran contra guerrilla war, and the need to destroy the black community, and using the money from that destruction is why drugs flooded our community.
Let me let's take a quick break, and then we'll come back and have you finish answering those questions on Razor's list. So again, family, you're tuned into In My Humble Opinion on 101.3 Jams, and we are speaking with Nakia Walker, who is running for city council. Get out and vote November 7.
I am H O one on one jams. Thanks for joining us and on today's I am H O election show. And as stated before, if you're new to the show today, we are right now joined by Nakia Walker, and she is a city council candidate. And November 7, as we said, and we've been saying all show is is almost here. So time to time to start making up that mind, and make sure you go out, most importantly, make sure you show up and be present, be accounted for, because it is a right. So Nakia, where we left off at, want to make sure that you had opportunity to complete your answer. Let's 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 go back to the to the stop and frisk, whether you agree or disagree with that. And if if disagree.
If it should be happening?
Yeah, and then
No, it shouldn't.
And if not, like then, as far as when people say, well, we need to keep our community safe, what are some 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 law enforcement changes that you would like to see in place of that?
Yeah. So the main thing that I think needs to happen is a citizen advisory board for the police department with enforcement powers. And that would mean, like, right now, if you submit a complaint to the police department, they are in charge of reviewing that. You never get any feedback, usually. They usually claim that it's a personnel issue. So that's really about, and it needs to be a diverse group of citizens. It can't just be the, you know, usual people who are, you know, who are who are at the table. We need to make sure that there's a first group of people who understand the abusive practices that Charlottesville Police Department has had on a citizen, dismantling, I've been calling for this the entire campaign and before, dismantling of Jade Task Force and the and the way it works. And luckily, there's, you know, the unfortunate events of the summer, but now there's, you know, a lot of people calling for, you know, more oversight, which will help us, you know, get more oversight for the communities that have been policed in a very aggressive manner. I tell people all the time, there was stand down, you know, on August 12, or the appearance of a stand down order. But in our communities, that is not what's happened. The police department is very aggressive, and the militarized police state, you know, a lot of our families know all too well.
Yeah, yeah. And that, you know, that brings to mind the whole transparency part of it, whether it's law enforcement or city council, and things that's what we've seen even where body cams, cameras aren't making a difference, you know. So when we talk about that accountability and things like that, is it, do you think it's just as simple as we just need to get the right people in office, or is it more policy?
No, we definitely, so the right people being in office will dictate the policy changes that were needed. We also have to change the culture. So if our police department has been used to doing business one way, we need them to know that, you know, with that advisory board intact, and this was something that Jeff Vogel was calling for also during his entire campaign, you have a different level of scrutiny that they will fall under. And not just you a pat on, you know, the hand, don't do that again, you need a new job, you know. So they are, if you are, and if you have committed criminal activity, you need to be prosecuted. Our prosecutor office has have not been willing to prosecute officers who have been accused of, and we know from across the country that, you know, that 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 happens, that they are not ethical. And so, you know, we need that advisory board with force, where the police have been very protective of itself up until this point, it will force them to, you know, to into those changes.
Ms. Walker, touching on that, all right, not going back to, you know, Hugh P. Newton or anything like that, but why, now, I ain't gonna do that to, I ain't gonna do that to. Why don't the police departments that police an area match the people that they're policing? Why do you think that's the case? So if we're if we're talking about they're not getting, like, you know, when they do something wrong, they're not getting looked at or prosecuted the way that they should. Do you think that if we make the police force match the area they're policing, that a lot of the stop and frisking and unethical things that go on to those people might go down?
It's possible. So that but diversity is very important, no matter what. So we definitely need a diverse police force. But we saw with Baltimore, that there were officers who were the same skin tone as Freddie Gray, who participated. And so that's a culture change, right, that that needs to happen. So yes, diversity is the diversity of the police force. And yes, they need to hire more black officers, Hispanic officers, we see, you know, see that across the board, the need for that. But we can't just stop there. And that's again, what the advisory board with enforcement powers would make sure, no matter who you are, you understand that we are talking about building a different culture. And that is going to be a lot of work, because we're talking about even the police, the creation of a police state, what what they are invented to do, right? So citizens are going to have to be very involved in saying, this, this is what we want.
Okay.
We want something, you know, completely different.
Now, and those are the two things that we had touched on earlier. I want to make sure like that we get your approach, your preferred approach when it comes to having an area to nurture and grow minority business, you know, of course, making it affordable. But then also the housing piece, because a lot of times we see development, but then once you develop, it develops to a point to where people who were living there no longer can can live there. So but when we talk about the approach on how to move people into whether it's homeownership, or just affordable housing, you know, while growing our business, those two things, how do you want to approach those?
So that talk, you know, we have a major income piece. For me to sit here and tell you that I have this master plan, and I've been telling people the entire campaign, it would be impossible. You're talking about, let's just take Friendship Court development, again, families with the median income of $10,800. And so you're talking about a town where anywhere between, depending on what you're looking at, the area median income is between $76,084,000 a year. And you're talking about housing being purchased, you can't purchase a house if your income is $10,800, right, at the way things are currently set up. So we're back to even how to move people, you know, out of poverty. And again, we're talking about another major culture shift, right? So we have a school system where there are two divisions within one school system. So a lot of our kids are not prepared. They don't, they're not prepared with, you know, to be able to even move into something like the community college, right? So you have the school to prison pipeline that's very alive and well. Anything you're talking about to help people obtain the income that's needed to move into the spaces that you that you're talking about, we have major work to do in every in in all those areas. So we have most of our kids graduating with diplomas that don't mean anything. The technical college isn't creating people, you know, our students are not leaving something like K Tech with skills that they can walk into a place and, you know, and and gain be gainfully employed, right? So we have to change how our school system is run. We have to get away from this. Everyone has to go to college. There are some people who don't, I mean, I have family members who significantly have made significantly more money than I've made without a college degree, right? So it's talking about not not preparing them for college, but if they choose, because they have the choice not to go, that they have the skills to go into an occupation that they are ready for. And when you're talking about mechanics, plumbers, electricians, people make, they should not have to go to college, one, to be able to walk into the workforce, you know, for those for those jobs. But those people get paid a lot of money. I know any of them that have ever shown up at my house. So that's also changing this movement that if you don't go to college, you're not prepared for life. And it's letting people understand that while everyone needs to be educated so that they can have the choice of college if they want choose that, that we're also making sure that we step up, you know, the technical, you know, like K Tech. Also, you know, Wes is kind of hit it, you know, there with making sure that there are more minority contracts within the city, you know, within the city government being awarded, you know, to minority owned businesses. And then, you know, the investment into those businesses, the city can do a much better job. For instance, you know, what are properties, the last two city council meetings ago, and if you watch that, you will, you can see my comments, they had, they received an 850,000 loan back in 2007, a no interest loan, that was supposed to be due in five years, that now they just got the second extension for. So if we can give a private owner who's been capitalizing off of their investment, then we can invest in minority black businesses in in the same way. So those are the things that if I were on council, that I would be pushing for, and I would be highlighting, that we don't have a problem with giving those kind of funds. That's almost a million dollars that he's now had a no interest free flow, even though he's been earning money the entire part of the process.
So Nakia, we're gonna take a quick break, and we're gonna come right back to wrap it up with you, okay? All right. Thank you. We'll be right back. I am H O with Nakia Walker, city council candidate.
All right. And we're back. You're tuned into In My Humble Opinion, and we're speaking with Nakia Walker, candidate for city council, wrapping up this interview here. Nakia, I definitely wanted to touch on your environmental focus that's mentioned in your campaign. And then with regard to affordable housing, I worked in it for quite a few years. And I wonder if you'll be directing any of your attention as far as getting people out of affordable housing. And people hear that, and they think that they may be offended, what do you mean, get us out? But I think people kind of fall into a trap of being there. And so I wonder, probably some of the things that you've already mentioned, but what type of things, and is that on your your to do list of helping to get people, you know, living on the same income level as others and things like that?
Oh, yeah, that's, I mean, that's the ultimate goal, right? Where you do this work so that, you know, people can choose whatever direction they decide to take. We have to, you know, acknowledge that there there isn't a level playing field. One of the things that I would push on council right now is the city doing more education around native families who do own homes in Charlottesville, who those homes are being brought right from under them, from there's a developer over in the 10th and Page neighborhood, who has been purchasing properties from families, because they can't fix them up or with the upkeep, you know, and then they get a lump sum of money out of them, and then renting them back to them. And they've been not getting anywhere near the market, you know, rate value, you know, for their homes. So that's a piece in even just keeping families in their homes who currently have homes. But we have, we are so far away from the the space we need to be in for people, you're talking about essentially moving out of affordable housing to the equivalent of people being ready to step out of that space and move into the Gleecins. Unless we change the way we do work in every area, which is what every day when I step into any room, that is my goal, the same goal I have for my family, is for you to be able to move through this life the way you choose to.
Yeah, yeah. And I think it's more of an educational piece of just to make sure people are at least informed on how things are working, you know, for those who want to take that next step, you know.
And for, but you have to have the skills, and you have to have the resources, right? So you're talking about people renting the Gleecins for $4,500 a month. Average incomes for new developments, starting renting one bedroom's $1,200 plus, right? And you have people who are struggling to to pay minimum rent. And they're not struggling because they have been, and and again, accountability, there's nobody in my family who wouldn't tell you that we don't start the conversation with like how you move differently in your world, too, and accept ownership. But we have to understand that when the cards have been stacked against you, how much work to, you know, take, you know, remove some of those policies that have been in place, that have been implemented and instituted so that you could be trapped. That's a, you know, that's part of the conversation we have to have. I hear so many kids thinking they're stupid and dumb, because they are in a school system that's been set up to keep them in that cycle. So it's about, you know, one, making sure that we value everyone in all spaces and give them the same opportunities. And like I said, I wouldn't accept any, you know, anything less than, you know, I would accept for my own, my own family.
And definitely, just to kind of tie up my question, I definitely agree that there are a lot of factors that play a part in getting people to the level that you and I are speaking of. I just know that with my experience there, some families get there and and don't aspire I, I just know that with my experience there, some families get there and, and don't aspire to anymore. And so I'm just curious as to whether or not
But I think when you have a, the, the deck stacked against you is even when we are talking about families, um, being, you know, more vocal about their space. You know, I work with families and who don't even think that they have the agency to walk into a school system and tell the school
Right.
What they want for their children. They don't even think they can influence the like IEP, you know, program with whether their kids receive special education services or not. And when you tell them, no, you do have a right. If you don't want X to happen, it don't happen. You know, that's foreign and that's how beat down people are, you know? And so if I, I haven't been in that space, you know, luckily I came through three women who made sure that I always understood that I could walk in any space and own it. But people who did not have that, that's, that's where the work is. The work is for, you know, to, for them to know that there is somebody they are pushing, pushing for them. And so they don't have to fall into those states of, um, despair and they don't have to, you know, just give up. I can, I, I hear the stories, I have the friends, I know, I mean, my own family. I understand why some people, um, can't continue to fight, but I think if we set the scene to let them know it's somebody in the ring with you, then things, things shift.
All right. Well, Nakia, we pressed up for time, but, but this has been awesome, very informative. So please, as we close, let the people know, uh, how to, how to reach you, um, lead up to November 7.
Yeah. VoteNakia.com, um, website. You can catch me on, um, Facebook and, um, I look forward to, um, seeing you at the polls. And if you want to chat between now and then, just, um, send me a message through, um, the VoteNakia.com and I will get back with you.